Okay.
All right, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, July 20th, to order at 6:06 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shang, President.
Chad Sexton, Duranian, President.
Veronica Kelly, President.
Get feedback.
Who was that?
I think that was you, Dave. I'm on meeting Al Pro for my speaker, and I'm on meeting Al Pro for my camera.
Can you mute your computer, Dave?
Yeah, I don't know why.
We'll get started as soon as our feedback issue is under control.
I think it's gone now.
All right, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded. It is live on Channel 9 and being recorded to be put on YouTube in the future. Is anyone else recording? All right, moving on, chairman's additions or deletions? I have none. Do you, Chad, or Joe?
Nope.
I do have one to, I just need a permission to sign off to get a telephone for the other.
Okay, so where do we want to put that? Let's put that under 4.6?
Yep.
4.6 elevator telephone. All right, anything else?
Nope.
All right, public comment period. Is there any public comments? I see one hand raised. Any others? Okay, Joan, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To my knowledge, and I know Dave from TCAM is here tonight, to my knowledge, it's quite possible that the chair of one of our town commissions or boards is claiming that TCAM is responsible for their not having Zoom links for their meetings, for not supplying public access or remote access to absent commission members, won't film their meetings, et cetera. I'm hoping you can advise if TCAM has singled out any particular commissioner or board and is denying them Zoom links, public access, filming services, or the ability to have their commissions, public meetings, or boards' public meetings posted on the town's YouTube channel. Thank you.
You're welcome. Take that under advisement. Any other public comments? All right, moving on, this will be quick. Review approved the meeting minutes for June 2, July 9, and July 16. None of those are ready yet, so those will be moved to our next meeting.
Madam Chair, may I add that any meetings that were moved to the approved file are now up on the website, so everything's current.
Oh, excellent.
As far as what was.
What we've been, right. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, we have a meeting at 6:15 with the Highway Department. It is right now 6:10, so we're going to go down and maybe hit a few more things, if that's okay with you, Jim. All right. So just in case there's anybody that wants to be here at 6:15 for that. All right, so the appointments and hearings. No, I'm sorry, number three, appointments of officials and personnel. So let me get to, I meant the wrong thing. We did get from the Flag Committee the resignation of Kim Gilberti. So I would just like to announce that. That leaves us with an opening on the Flag Committee, and we do have a volunteer response form from Natalie Call, who was in the, who was previously on the committee and hadn't understood that her, or hadn't known that her appointment had run out. So I would like a motion to appoint Natalie Call to the Flag Committee for a term of three years, expiring April of 2024. Is there a motion?
I move that we appoint Natalie Call to the Flag Committee for a term of three years, expiring April 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Joe Shang, second. Any discussion?
I do.
Okay.
There were other individuals that did volunteer, that submitted a volunteer response form. And for those individuals that did, there are other boards and committees that definitely need volunteer help, and I'd like to reach out to you to say that if you are interested in helping out, please look over the openings that we have on our website, because we definitely could use your help, even if it's just one day a week or however, but I don't want to let a good volunteer go by.
And I will, actually, we have two good volunteers right here, and we had a third as well that put in for the Flag Committee previously that had not been appointed when we did the appointments in April. And I do know that the Commission on for Disabilities needs people, and I was notified by MRPC today that they're going to start work on applying for the grant to get that document written, and they wanted to know when we could meet and who we were meeting with. And one of the things from last year was that we, the town, said that we were going to have a Commission on Disabilities, but there were never appointments made to that commission, and it would be good if we had people come forward. So please, please, if you're willing to volunteer for the town, that's a place that I can think of right off the top.
Town properties is a lot of, lot of, lot of spots for you, and we never turn down a volunteer.
Exactly. So anyway, we have your forms, and you might be getting a, an email from us saying, here are some other committees if you'd like to volunteer. So thank you very much for putting in your names.
And congratulations to Natalie.
Yes.
Congratulations, Natalie.
All right, so that takes care of 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3. It's just about 6:15, so I think we're going to go back to our first appointment, 2.1, the meeting with the Highway Department to discuss funding of the Greenville Road Bridge. So Jim, if you'd like to join us up here, or over here, or wherever you're most comfortable, feel free.
The owl will find you no matter what.
Yes, if you talk, it's all over. So we like that. So Greenville Road Bridge, we did talk about this in mid-June. So you were going to come back with the second bid to talk to us about that, and we were looking at funding.
Yep.
So I had sent you a form. Did you get a chance to look at that at all? The one? Yeah, didn't I send that to you?
I believe so.
The Greenville Road bid evaluation?
Oh, we did send it back.
Did you?
Were you requesting it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I sent it back.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. I think we're going to make a copy and then give a copy to Chad. He's here, but he did. You, you had requested to a breakdown in regards to the monies.
I had talked to Dick Saracen, our interim deputy, and he said, hey, can we find out exactly what this is going to cost, and then we can look for ways to fund?
Yeah, and then I did. I told him.
You did send that back to me?
Yeah.
That's the one thing I did not print out. Um.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of that either.
Give us a second, and we'll find it. Yes. You're saying it came back, so. This.
Yes.
Jim, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring a copy.
Have the monthly reports from April, May?
I may not have emailed them to you.
Oh.
I think I dropped them off.
Our copy in the Selectmen's box? Yes, I can see that. All right, so.
Oh, Jimmy, how you doing?
How are you?
I'm good, thank you. I'm a ghost.
The end was 162,000. The amount expended is 140. There's no constraints on the funds, and the fund source is the 200,000 town set aside, correct? So we have about 60,000 left in that. The engineering for the construction is 78,000, so we don't have quite enough for that. We need about another 18, 20K for that. The contingency is 129,000, and the bid is 1,291,032.60. We have 500,000.
So my, my understanding is the town wanted to know what the contingency was, correct?
He wanted to know what the contingency was, what the total cost for the project was, and to look at where we could get funds. The, he and I had talked about, he didn't think that using all of the Chapter 90 funds were a good plan. He said you could maybe take some of it, but you don't want to be taking all of it. So I'm just looking at this, so we have. So this is like 1.5 million, and we have five, so we need a million dollars, if I'm reading this right.
That's.
And we don't even have that in one big lump from the ARCA funds right now.
So the, Jim, if you know, the 500,000 that's set aside, is that where the municipal small bridge program, is that where that came from?
Yes.
Okay, that did.
And then we applied for the, the project was supposed to be completed last month of this year.
Because, but it was supposed to be started a while, yeah.
And then we filed for the extension.
Yep.
Which brings us to September 2022.
Correct. What I tried to send you that was corrupted, that.
I can't open the.
Yeah. Um, I went back, I couldn't open up what I sent. But the, the state did approve a $300 million local infrastructure bond bill that includes 200 million for the Chapter 90 Local Roads and Bridges Program for fiscal year 2022. I mentioned it when Senator Cronin was here, but he said that it looks like just the Chapter 90 is, is, you know, what has been expected. But I am seeing that they are putting more money in the Chapter 90 pool. And I'm wondering how it would affect us. Do you know anything about how that?
I reached out to Michael Era, and he didn't, he wasn't aware of anything, anything above and beyond what we were getting for FY22.
So my, my thought on the matter is, you know, I wanted to touch base with you. This really, you can, you can look under Public Works for, under Mass.gov for this information. When I mentioned to you before, I thought I heard that there was going to be more money put into Chapter 90. This is what I was, I was talking about. And now that I know that this has gone in, this, this was as, as of last week is when I heard that it was approved. But I can go forward and talk with both Sheila Harrington and Senator Cronin to see what we can do as far as, see if we can tap into some of these, these funds.
I, I think it would be worth doing that. I think at the same time, we should talk to our accountants, because I think we're going to need to look at other ways to do it. I'm sorry, I did not see that.
I mean, for us to come up with a million dollars out of our pocket to do this bridge would be, it would be impossible right now. Just, we couldn't do it.
No, we don't have, we would have to borrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which would go to town meeting.
Which would go to town meeting. I think anything that we do is going to require a town meeting vote, anyway, to do it to appropriate the funds.
Correct.
So one thing Dick said, he said, maybe if we wait, the construction costs will go down.
But we had the bids out, and they're waiting for an answer. That's what I'm concerned about, and the cost.
Every, every day it goes, goes on, it gets more expensive.
Yes.
So in order to meet the deadline for the 500,000, the initial, the original 500,000.
Right.
They would need to start this fall. If, if it goes into the winter, then the cost goes up considerably, because now they have.
If they're working during.
If they're working during the winter hours in order to meet the deadline, following me.
Yes, so.
They seem to think that if they were to start this fall, they would, they would start in September. If everything went as planned, they would start in September. They would work up until December and then take the rest of the winter off and then resume again in the, in the spring, and they would be able to meet that deadline without any issues. Without any extreme costs.
So what I'd like to do then, so when do you have to let the bidder know by? When, when if they drop that date?
Well, it's kind of a standstill now that, once, once we secure the funds, then they go back, they check with all their vendors to make sure that nothing has gone up, because it's, it's day to day right now. Things are going up and down, unfortunately.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is give this to the accountant then, and see what they can do, and you check to see.
With my state.
And again, we do, we do have money in Chapter 90.
Yes, we do, but not enough to cover, enough to get started. And then, of course, it would be another Chapter 90 round next time, but then that means that no road work gets done. And so. Yeah.
Can we put this on our next, our next Tuesday meeting?
April the 27?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're stringing you out here, too. We'll do what we can.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
You should check too with the assessors to find out what our borrowing, our borrowing capacity is.
Okay. We'll do that as well. And we'll, we'll just keep looking to fix, so how about this bridge?
It's, it's in desperate need to be repaired.
Okay.
It's been put off.
This has been in capital planning for a while. So they do, the state does inspections, and they, they came back and said this needs to be replaced ASAP. It's a.
Okay.
We got barrels down there now, forcing traffic to the middle of the road to keep the weight off the interest.
All right, so.
And again, when this all started, we had the money. You know. It's just.
Two years ago, three years ago.
So why, what happened? Why did it get delayed?
And shut down, and then.
But construction didn't.
It did.
Construction shut down.
Engineering shut down. It still hadn't been final, the, the final design, the plans and such.
Oh, I guess, Jimmy, I'd have a question. You said that we had the money a couple of years ago. What did we do with the money? Where'd the money go?
The original cost of the bridge was, was 666.
For the bridge itself, that was the bid, which is now.
Okay, I got that.
For engineering, that was with engineering construction.
All right.
So we had the 500,000 from the Small Municipal Bridge Program, plus the 200,000 we secured through.
From the town.
Through town funds.
Right.
Right.
And that, that was seed money for the remainder of the project.
COVID hit, and then everything, everything went ahead.
The other thing we need, and it's still under discussion, is exactly what those ARCA funds can be used for.
Right.
Because we do have about 450,000 coming in from that.
I spoke to Bill Scully from Crane.
Yep.
Did he reach out to you?
No. I just know.
I talked to him briefly. I got to look into it a little more. If the town showed a loss, then we'd be eligible for a certain amount of funds through the, through the ARCA program, I guess. It's, I got to look more into it. He touched briefly on it just the other day, and.
We're supposed to get like 2.13 million or whatever, and the first million comes out in two sections, 450,000. The other is unclear how it's supposed to be used. So as is the exact things that you can use this for. So, but infrastructure is one.
That's one.
Right, and because we're in, in the situation that we're in, I'm wondering if we are able to utilize those before they're released.
Right.
And that's something that we have to reach out to the local legislature to see what we can do to, to see if we can get that done. That's the angle that I'm looking at. So if you can talk to the accountant on your end, and I'll see what I can do on the state end. If you hear anything, let me know.
And if you'll mail that to me, that would be good. Because although that's my name, I went to a room, I could tell, which is not my email.
Okay.
He can't, I suppose, to Veronica can't. It must have been.
My biologist.
So anyway. Sorry, one, two. I didn't realize it was out there.
You got it.
All right. Or I would have had it to fix soon, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy.
If, if you hear anything, let me know.
Oh, sure.
Let me know where it's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And if I need to, if I need to meet with Sheila, and I'm going to call to see if you're available, just in case she wants to talk to you. Okay with that?
Yeah, anytime. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, this is ongoing. All right, moving on, our appointment with the Board of Water Commissioners is not until 7, so we have about 30 minutes. So we're going to move on to the meeting business, 4.1, the notice of grant receipt. So let me bring that up. This is from Fire Chief. All right, so I'm just going to read the memorandum from the Fire Chief. This is for Grant Receipts, Townsend Fire EMS Department, as part of the Neshaba Valley Emergency Medical System, has received two ultrasound devices with cases and Apple iPads. Use this advanced technology to increase the level of care provided. Specifically, the technology will be used to detect internal bleeding, blood cart, plots, and heart activity in the field. Townsend Fire EMS Captain Martin Scott is currently the president of Neshaba Valley EMS. Through Captain Scott's efforts, the Community Foundation of North Central Mass has funded a $28,000 regional program to get ultrasound technology into the hands of the four advanced-level ambulance services and then the Neshaba Valley catchment area. I respectfully request the Select Board accept the equipment described above with a value of $7,000, with the understanding the Fire EMS Department will become responsible for renewal of the software subscription in three years at an estimated cost of $700. So is there a motion to accept the grant receipt?
I make a motion that the Town of Townsend Fire EMS Department takes the grant for lots of my place for the ultrasound equipment and the subscription to the software in the amount of approximately $7,000.
There is second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Sexton, Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. So thank you, Captain Scott and Chief Boynton.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Moving on to 4.2, Discussion of Minimum Wage Adoption and the Collins Scale. So this has come up as the state's minimum wage has been changed to $13.50 an hour. The Collins Wage Scale that, the wage matrix, this was started about two years ago in October. I think it will be two years, and at that point, the, the minimum wage was lower. So Grade A Step 1 starts at $13. It is Grade A Step 3, that is $13.53. And there's a 2% increase between steps, I believe it is here. So what municipalities are not required to pay minimum wage. But we do have people that, employees that do start at Grade A Step 1 or Grade A Step 2. They might have started a year ago at Step 1, and they would have moved up a step to 1326. So the question becomes, do we want to adopt Grade A Step 3 as our minimum, because it's minimum wage? Again, as a municipality, we are not required to do that. This mostly applies to temporary employees, summer.
Right.
So.
So those summer help would be the Recreation Department, the temps for Parks and.
Cemetery.
There was, they were looking for a temp in facilities at one point, weren't they? There was, they were looking for a tent and facilities at one point, weren't they?
I don't know if they are.
Not now, but there was one at one point.
So that's the question becomes, I know that there are change of status forms waiting. In the treasurer's office, some with thirteen point twenty-six, some with thirteen fifty-three. Have to make a decision of where we're gonna go. We did not budget for minimum wage. I know it's a small amount, it's a small increase, but again, it was not budgeted. So thoughts.
Do we have a number, rough number? What what that's gonna cost us to do this again? Throughout the town?
Summer throughout the town?
Yeah, it's we don't because it wasn't. It wasn't looked at in the budget. My my thought is that we. For this budget period, we go with what we knew at that particular time and then we would increase it. So that we can prepare for the budget next year. That's just my thought.
That's mine too. It's probably gonna cost a couple thousand dollars. Meaning, you know, it won't be a hundred thousand dollars. It will be more probably in the five thousand. Plus or minus category. Because it is a twenty-five cent increase over what they're making roughly. But I I think I would lean towards what Chad says to consider this for the next budget period because we did not consider it for this.
Well, now, my question would be, and I think I I know my own answer here, but when we brought the temporary help on, it was at a different rate anyway, so. I I if that's the case, they knew they were getting the lower rate when they came in. And I think we have to be really proactive and, you know, not run this budget out of control, you know, budget it for next year and move it up.
I would agree with that. I guess I'm gonna ask, I see that Andrea's on. Andrea, what are your thoughts from the FinCon side of things?
I I agree with you. I don't see where you'd get the funding to do it this year. Other again, they're going to town meeting, having a special town meeting that's mid-year that complicates things when it comes to salaries. I I expect you, the best deal would be to address it next year's budget.
Okay. In that case, I think we're gonna leave things as they are. There's no need for a motion and we'll. Move on to four point three.
Thank you for your input, Andrea.
Yes, thank.
Thank you, Andrea.
So four point three, discussion of the pest management contract and four point four is the discussion of the landscaping contract. So what I I did send out and. Pest management, I I guess, Chaz, I'm gonna, you're the liaison for facilities, so I'm gonna let you talk on this. I did. Today, Bill came in from JB Turf, which I got right around Fort Bluff. And I did scan it and put it in SharePoint. I don't know if either of you were able to look at that.
Yes, I did. I didn't look at it. I I just because it's not on the agenda, so I'm not even gonna gonna address that particular one.
Okay, go ahead because I think we do need to look at it.
Right, but it's, you know, we're looking at the landscaping and that's something something different, which.
Well, it would include the weed control.
That's why I think.
Okay. Well, let's talk about pest management first then, four point three.
On pest management, as far as the facilities department had come up with three different. Quotes on this. I had a conversation with facilities on Monday in regards to what exactly is going on. We're not necessarily, we're not necessarily in a contract as far as year, year to year. We were on a monthly, which was terminated last month in June. Therefore, there were, in in the reasons were that it was, there were no bait, there was no baiting that really was happening. There there was no real pest control. The where where we are now is that we definitely need to get a pest control service in here. And the, as I, we had talked about before, we have outside bait stations. Those bait stations are ours. We purchased those immediately when we first sign on with any pest control service. So we have bait stations outside. It it looks like the last, the last work that was done was at the beginning of spring, which was spraying for ants. There were bees, spiders. And. There were looked at bats and the eaves. As far as is what needed to be done with those. So where we stand now is that we have, you guys had, I assume, got the three quotes that were in there. As far as what I've got from facilities and what I see here, the one that. That stands out to me the most would be the one that is going to take care of. Remediation both on the outside on a more proactive monthly basis and not be costly if we need them to do anything on the inside. That would be the armored pest management system. And that's the one that when I discussed with facilities, that that was, that made the the most sense.
So that one is annual and twice a year?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Yearly foundation spray, the. Rat, rat bait with mice refill, all bait stations on exterior building. Both spring and fall.
But this is say all contracts will be renewed yearly with any price increases. Does this tie us to that?
It it's a month to month, so we would be notified that if the price went up the following year, then they would notify us. Have a decision whether to continue with them or not, but it is pretty much a month to month kind of thing.
But now, Chaz, I I guess in that armored, I I was reading that. If for some reason, we see or the maintenance calls because we need an extra treatment. You know, that's extra. I think one of the other contracts, it was in there, they just come without an extra cost, so. I think before we jump on this, we really need to make sure we're we're doing apples for apples on this because. If we're gonna sign into something that will guarantee us. Pest control throughout the entire year, instead of do it monthly, let's do quarterly to save some money. But I I I think, you know, I was told that gee, yeah, once a year they come in, they guarantee for three months. Well, we still have nine months of the year that there's no guarantee to that. So for me to sit here and think that this one company armored is gonna come in and take care of all our problems for that amount of money? I think we're fooling ourselves.
That's what they have been doing. That's what the other company was doing, same thing.
And.
That's what we, that's what we had historically.
Well, I I do believe the original contract years ago was with what, Montezot Pest Control, and there was no issues?
That's correct, yes.
I mean, it's a local business. It's something in town. I mean, I'm I'm not swaying anyone any which way, but it doesn't always work out to get the cheapest bid out there. That's just, I I've I've learned that in my own business. I I just think we need to really think of that a little bit better. Maybe we need to talk to these people individually and. Get a one-on-one so we know what we're really, compare apples to apples here. That's my two cents worth.
I think we have decision here soon because we're. We're into the season. And so I I guess, what do you see as the differences, Joe, between these? So. If we look at Montezot Pest Control here.
Alright, let's go to them. Alright.
They had once yearly, that was option number one, and that was twelve fifty. And I I assume that's per building. Are we looking at three buildings here?
Well, that's, that's the whole thing.
And I think them numbers would change if we have multiple buildings too, so. And I don't think that other contract had discount for multiple buildings, did it?
Yes, it's a ten percent. I saw this somewhere.
The purchase description is buildings for the police department. The Memorial Hall and the Library Senior Center.
Yeah, Brookline Street, two seventy-two Main Street. And sixteen, twelve to sixteen Dudley. Alright. And I think on the armored, that's once a year if they have to come back in. I'm just trying to find where I read what that cost would be if they come in. I mean, my opinion, I think pest control should be done. Maybe we should look into. Try to do it quarterly or something, you know, go out to bid, maybe it's a different price, but. I mean, whatever we gotta do, we gotta get pest control under control, so whatever you guys decide tonight. But I think we need to, you know. I think Montezot was doing it for many years, the way I understand it, and there was no issue. I think the reason they're not here, we won't get get into discussing, but. We should always try to use our own local. Residents if we can to try to. Work that way. That's my opinion.
Police Department, Memorial Hall and Senior Center Library.
I don't see that much difference between them.
No, they're really not. And the only difference that is that if we have. Montezot charges extra for interior option price, it's gonna be different.
Right.
That's the only real difference.
But they do give a discount for three copies, ten percent discount. But to any yearly services.
The yearly is the foundation, the eve spray for bats.
Was the discount, I think I read with Montezot, correct?
Yes.
I don't, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know if I've seen any discount from armored for multiple buildings.
Yeah, the other one does include interior.
Right. Who is not muted?
I'm not. I was gonna ask a question.
Oh, okay.
What what do you do with the bats? Bats are very good. Bats kill tons of insects.
I didn't see anything on here for bats.
It it, all they do, Andrea, is spray the eaves so that they stay away from it.
Perfect.
It's not that they kill them, it just is retarded.
Thank you.
Right.
This is Montezot yearly eaves of the exterior of the building sprayed for bees and other flying insects excluding bats. So it's not, there's no specific that, anything that I saw.
Any of them.
That's where excluded. And the the pricing wise, they aren't that different, really.
Not, not really a lot, no, and.
Excluding bats, that's Montezot, right?
There's no interior treatment.
You have to pay extra. Interior spraying. One seventy-five times two plus zero if you were.
So.
I am good with staying with Montezot.
I I. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Chaz.
The one that that said that this is what they they wanted, so that's.
They preferred armor. Facilities before it's on. Do you know why?
I think it had to do with the interior additional cost.
Well, this is my take. I, you know, Montezot did it for years and years and there was no issue, no concerns. Maybe it ain't the cheapest price out there, but we're we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. I I think we should go back to Montezot and, you know, maybe Rob likes armored, but. Well, if pest, Montezot doesn't do a good job, then we can look at it, but. Obviously, the company they've got hasn't done a very good job either, so let's take a little control and try to. Get things back running the way they should. That's my opinion.
Yeah, Rob's, Rob's choice was for armored pest management and the reason is that Montezot charges extra for the interior option price.
So armored, I don't, and I'm looking, but I don't see anything in there that says interior for armored either. Am I missing that? Alright, so two seventy-two, it says it's tough spraying for ants, spiders.
It's option number two, the monthly service, interior spraying for ants, spiders and other. And any other crawling insects excluding termites and dead bugs.
That's a hundred and seventy-five.
One sixty-five there, but it it's included, so it's.
Armored, I think, says.
Exterior building.
Yeah.
Exterior building. I don't see any interior.
Well, if you look at just the two seventy-two Main Street, it says interior for an additional hundred and seventy-five dollars. But it's not on the interior of the other ones that I can see.
Those are only the exterior ones, I think.
Yeah, it's only the exterior.
Once again.
Oh, here it is, interior spraying. This is on, yeah, so it's on. Two seventy-two Main Street, interior spraying for ants, spiders and any other crawling insects excluding.
But you pay for that one seventy-five, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, we're close. I mean, yeah, the numbers were close. That's my opinion. Yes, the way I understand it, if armor comes out and we have an issue, there's an extra cost, but what I was reading on Montezot. I think if there's a problem, they just come back out and take care of it. Maybe I I read that wrong, but that's what I got out of it.
I'm just giving you what the recommendation was.
I think the only difference is the exterior charge.
Thirteen fifty, one's twelve fifty. 1350, one's 1250.
1250.
In, in my opinion, even what Montechuset doing monthly, I don't see any real reason to do monthly. I think we should do a quarterly.
I see the same price. It's 1550 there. And if I go up to Montechuset and I do the 1250 and add the 300.
Yep.
I get 1550. And then we also get the 10% discount.
With Montechuset.
With Montechuset for here.
Okay.
So I, I would go with Montechuset.
So I make a motion that we go to Montechuset Pest Control?
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Rainey, yes. And that would go under professional services? 191, 50, 300.
I believe so, yeah. Yeah. So this will go under the facilities professional services line item?
Yep.
And all those in favor? Did we vote already?
Yes.
Yes, so we're good. All right, facilities, facilities. Professional service. Line item, okay.
Do you want the number?
Yeah. 191, 50, 300. Okay, thank you. All right. It is just about seven o'clock. Do we wanna skip talking about landscaping and go to the PFAS discussion? Do you have your whole, is this everybody, or should we wait two more minutes and vote on elevator phones?
Why'd you go on elevator phones?
See if anyone else, Tom. All right, so, or let's skip the landscaping and let's talk about, I know Kathy's on and she wanted to on the town hall, being open on, so this is 4.5, we'll come back to 4.4.
Sure.
I put this on the agenda because I know the town hall used to be open on Tuesday evenings from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And we opened June 1st roughly for the 9:00 to 4:00 to reopen town hall. So I was just thinking that we should consider reopening town hall and on Tuesday evenings for those people who aren't able to transact business at town hall because of work hours from 9:00 to 4:00. So I have no set start date, and I just thought we should start this discussion. So Kathy.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak on the subject. So I've been working at town hall since 2004. We always had the Tuesday evening hours from 6:00 to 8:00. But what I have found, and I talked to the other departments today that are open on Tuesday evening, except for the building inspector, he wasn't in today. And we have found that we have very little traffic in our office for Tuesday evening. And to close the office between 4:00 and 6:00, I think is confusing to the public. And that's also the high traffic time when people are coming home from work and they think, I'm gonna stop in a town hall on my way home, oh yeah, that's right, they're closed, it's 5:30, I'll have to come back. And then they don't because they get home, they get busy. So we're wondering about not closing between 4:00 and 6:00 and staying open till 6:00 and closing at that point. And that will get most of the people coming home from work, being able to stop in. And if there are those people who need to come in later, and I talked to the other offices, nobody minds setting up a time to meet with them. I had someone that needs to be sworn in, and he asked if we were open tonight. And I said, no, but just let me know when is good for you, and we can meet down here, I can swear you in and do that. So no one really has an issue making an appointment to do that.
Well, and you've been very good about accommodating when people wanna get sworn in and stuff like that, Kathy. So I, I agree with you. What, is Tuesday on a good day for this? Or could it be another day as opposed to Tuesday? Or is that, that's just historically been the day for town, right?
Yeah, and I think that's because that's when the selectmen's meetings have always been held. So we'd be open the same time.
I, I, I think, you know, that 4:00 to 6:00 is by far a better time for people coming home. If they're on their way home, I mean, they stop there. Kathy made a good point, they get home, we all get sidetracked, we all get doing something and we miss it. If everyone's willing to do the 4:00 to 6:00, we're still given that extra time. And it definitely makes sense. You're, you're at work, you're gonna leave, you're gonna go home. But you unwind for a few minutes, the time, you gotta get ready, come back. I, I think it would be, I think it'd be much better to do the 4:00 to 6:00 and keep it open on the Tuesday, or if we find a better night, to do a better night that accommodates the citizens.
The other thing we spoke about between the departments is closing to the public Friday afternoons. We have found Friday afternoons, well, Fridays historically low. There's only four departments in the building that work on Fridays. And I think Board of Health closes at noon time. So then in the afternoon, it's the assessors, the tax collector, and the town clerk. So we didn't know if you would be amenable to that while we're talking about hours. I told him I'd throw it out there.
Let's, let's not get crazy now. Let's not get crazy now. Let's solve one little issue at a time.
I know, but that was a fast pitch. Supposed to be a curveball.
That was a good one. That was good, Kathy.
But I just thought if we were going to change hours at all, it would be easier to do it at one time versus changing them now and then maybe looking into changing them again. That was hard.
And, and I think I would like to, I think that we need to talk with the union officials if it had anything to do shifting of the times for employees. We would need to definitely check with them. I mean, I, I hear ya. If, if, you know, I've been here on a Friday and it's pretty much a ghost town. So I, I, I understand that.
So have, have people talked at all about starting at 8:00 a.m. instead of 9:00 a.m. and doing, having the town hall open 8:00 to 4:00?
I don't think people would have an issue with that, quite honestly.
You know, do Fridays, close for Friday afternoon, but start at 8:00 a.m. so the people before work could come in too.
Right.
You know, so do 8:00 to 4:00.
Yeah.
No, and then 8:00 to 12:00 on Friday. And then I'm just thinking, as far as hours goes, that makes it.
Yep.
And that's a little more convenient for the public too, I think, to start at 8:00 versus 9:00.
Yep.
Well, and you have a very valid point that the, the way in which society is today is much different than it has been historically. So, you know, I know for me, if I'm gonna look at it personally, I've been trying to come race here before 4:00 for some of the things that I've tried to do. So, you know, you know, I, I think that's a good idea. That's a good idea.
I think the public during COVID, they've also have realized they can do a lot online now. We've opened up that whole thing. We have the drop box outside, and that really has been a big help. So something.
I mean, why don't we, I, I, I mean, I like the idea, the 4:00 to 6:00, that's by far better than 6:00 to 8:00. And if we're gonna do the Friday afternoon's closing, starting at 8:00, 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Thursday, you know, just do a 60-day trial. And if it finds that we got a lot of complaints, we'll just re, redo it. If there's no complaints, just move on.
Well, that's the other, the second half of this was, when do we start? You know, this isn't something that I'm thinking, we start tomorrow. This is more later.
Well, if we're gonna start, do a time shift, my suggestion would be that you would do it in the fall. You wouldn't wanna do it in the summer just because it's.
Then, then how about if we do this? Keep it 9:00 to 4:00 right now. Add the 4:00 to 6:00 for Tuesdays. And then consider the Friday afternoons and the 8:00 a.m. start for the fall. And that gives us time to discuss with the unions.
Yeah, because I want, I definitely wanna just have a conversation with them.
Yeah, I didn't even think of the unions.
That's a great compromise.
Okay, so, and when do we wanna start the evening? With August, maybe?
August 1st, 1st of August.
With August 3rd? Does that work, Kathy, do you think? Did you guys talk at all about start time?
No, we really didn't. We had no idea what you had in mind as far as that goes.
Yeah, we had nothing specific. So maybe start in August with 4:00 to 6:00 on Tuesday, so that's two weeks from today.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Andrea?
What are you gonna do about keeping the doors open at night?
We're gonna work on that.
Actually, we should have that sewn up by the end of the week, Andrea.
Right, we should have that all.
Certainly by August 1st, people are gonna be very disappointed at 4:05.
Exactly, if they get here and can't get in. Yeah, so that should be all together, but we have some things to finalize tonight on that.
Yep.
And so by the end of the week, hopefully, we have that and we won't have to have doormen for the opening of town hall. So, okay, so is there a motion to stay open on Tuesday evenings from 4:00 to 6:00 beginning in August?
I move that we change the opening time on Tuesday.
From opening?
Oh, stay open. Stay open on Tuesday.
For and closing at 6:00, starting on August 6th.
August 3rd. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Yes.
Veronica, yeah. All right, so we'll do that. Talk with the FSMI and see about closing on Friday afternoons and maybe starting at 8:00 a.m. So.
I think if we have that conversation, we should be able to have an answer relatively quickly.
Yeah, I, I almost feel like if we're gonna start at 8:00 a.m., it should be Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and make Tuesday, keep Tuesdays 9:00 to 6:00.
Yep.
Instead of, but that might be confusing to the public, I don't know, so we'll see. Or just make it 8:00, all the way across, and on Fridays, 9:00 to 12:00, or something like that. We'll talk to the union.
You probably need to make sure you're not going over everyone's hours too.
Exactly.
Because budget.
There's that too, exactly. So, okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kathy.
7:00 p.m. It's now 7:10, sorry, longer talk than what we thought. But PFAS treatments.
So Todd Melanson, Chairman of Board of Water Commissioners, with Dave Vajant Superintendent, Times Water Department. Basically, we wanted to come, I guess, continue the communication between the two boards, give you and the community an update on where we stand with the PFAS. And we, at the end, we do have an ask of the board, of your board. Cross Street Well is now online and supplying water to the system to pass all its tests. One thing that, it's something that a lot of people don't know about our, our industry is leak detection, how important it is. We went through a comprehensive leak detection program. This, what, this spring, right?
It was the beginning of May, and all repairs were done by April, June 1st.
And why that's important, it's reduced our pumping by about 15%, which means the demand on the system is less. Harbor Trace was operating at the time at probably about 28% of capacity. June, they got it down to about 7%. As of now, it only runs roughly, if that, four hours a week, which greatly reduces. And that's just to meet the ultimate peak demands. The goal is the ongoing development of the Main Street, new Main Street well, gravel pack well. We're looking, shooting for it to go online spring of 22, 2022, excuse me. When that goes online, Harbor Trace will not be needed for capacity at that point in time, or peak capacity. The next step is the planning of the Harbor Trace Treatment Plant. That, funding for that is coming due or gonna start becoming available in August. Dave, I believe sent you a draft of what Ty and Bond projected it would look like. One other thing, Monday, June 2016, EP will be out at the Harbor Trace site, looking through and starting the Bureau Wayside cleanup investigation by looking at some of the monitoring wells out in that location, sampling them and, and in that part. So with the, you know, with the, the funding available and the planning that's going on, we're, the hopes are break ground late 2022, early 2023, and probably have it up within a year. Now, these are engineering goals and stuff, and nothing ever goes to plan, so, but those are basics. The memorandum of understanding, the draft that was sent to you from Ty and Bond, one of the things we need, and they've gone over a lot of your meetings and things. We voted to go ahead and go after the funding and support a treatment plant. I don't think your board, we can't find a record of your board.
We never voted.
So the ask would be, so that we, because we can't go forward and look for funding for, for the plant, was to have a vote of your board in support of our applying for and reaching out for these grants for a treatment plant for Harbor Trace, and which is Brook Wells. So we would need that ask of you to take a vote.
Grant some funding.
Grant some funding, excuse me.
So is this the last page of the type and
Yeah.
The acceptance page?
Yeah. Not the very last page, but.
It's on the very last.
Yeah, page 10. It's the MasDEP pilot study proposal participation, August 2021. Page 10.
Okay, the schedule, yes, okay.
So that first one, the only thing.
Whoever has, could someone mute, please? I said Kathleen Spofford.
No, Andrea.
Andrea, one of you. Thank you. Thank you.
So we would need a formal board of your board so that we can go ahead with the procedures to pursue this.
So this is the MasDEP pilot study proposal preparation?
Yeah.
For August.
This is, yeah.
For August, okay.
So Todd, if we told you no, they'd just throw a monkey wrench at you?
Don't add any to it, please.
The engineering, the 17,300, is that what we're looking at?
No, 8,100.
It is 8,100. It's for them to write the, the grant proposal.
Right, it's just, it's just for the proposal.
And that comes, that's already been, that comes out of, was it enhancement?
System enhancement.
System enhancement.
Yeah, it's like an MOU, but it's not.
No, and this is just a draft.
Just the 8,100.
Yes, yeah.
We worry about the.
You're not approving the 8,100, that's already been set and taken care of within our operating budget. We need you to formally support pursuit of a treatment plant.
Correct.
Yeah.
For the Harbor Trace, and which is Brook. For the Harbor Trace, which is Brook Wells.
I don't think we have a choice.
No.
No.
Alright.
Well, we just said, right? What if we said no, Todd? No, only kidding. Someone want to make that motion?
Nice and easy.
We don't want to lose any more here, Todd.
No, I'm gonna check with them.
Me too. Hey, we gotta have fun, we gotta be relaxed, right? All good. You guys are doing a good job, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is Harbor Trace and Weathersburg, why did I think it was just Harbor Trace?
No, the proposal is to bring Witches Brook. The idea is if you don't, well, first, there are, there have been longstanding issues with, with Witches Brook, but the idea is that knowing where the problem is, this plume can migrate other places, especially if you pump harder from someplace else. So the fear is, is if you don't, it's gonna migrate to Witches Brook anyways, given the septic systems and some of the other stuff.
And Witches Brook two got a seven point nine on the last one. So it could go up or could go down, so.
Alright, so I move to support the Water Department to move forward with the MasDEP pilot study proposal preparation for August twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes?
Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes.
I just realized I wrote on the signature page.
It's only the draft.
Okay.
It's not a big deal.
Okay.
But that's just so you have an idea of what's, what's gonna take place, potential timelines and things like that.
Okay, so we just need to get the original to sign it?
No, we, we have to vote on it, this is just a draft, this was just so we can, nowhere on any recorded record, we have you saying that you supported it, and DEP won't let us apply for any grants unless you do.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Do you have any questions on the PFAS update?
Well, I guess my one question would be how to cross street do in PFAS testing?
Three.
Three.
Three PPT, so they wouldn't have let us, they wouldn't have let us put it into the system if it was an issue.
If it was, right.
Main Street well will be, on Tuesday, will be doing the final chemical test, and we'll be doing PFAS on that day.
On the, on the new well, not the old well.
Okay.
The old well was not detected.
Empty.
Oh, alright.
So I was at the Water Department meeting last night, so I had, oh, I have much more information than I ever wanted to know about water.
But, so anyways, I guess that's about it.
My, my other question would be, private well people, what do they do? Do we have an answer for that yet, or is it the board of?
I will get, I will give you something on testing, because I've actually heard it online. As Title V, if you test, you have to disclose.
Right.
So if you test for PFAS in your private well, you put your encumbrance on your property, because if it comes up positive, you have to disclose. So if you're trying to sell.
And the other part of it is, it may not be the water, that's the issue.
It might be the pipes in the house.
Yes, and so that's, that's the only hesitancy I have on people with private wells. For the most part, they're deep bedrock wells, so they should not, we don't have, the deep bedrock wells, those are the ones that are found that have been contaminated around the Air Force bases and things like that. Our wells are, like I said, at most sixty feet deep, but they're usually between thirty and sixty-five feet deep, the gravel pack wells.
The, the town wells.
Yes, right. Grab, the bedrock wells are much deeper. We, as far as I know, and I've done a decent amount of research, I can't find anything that would be a large-scale plume like that, and you would have expected to find it in other areas of town. You would have, if there was a deep bedrock, you would have expected all of our municipal wells to come up, and that's the difference between the two. Now, if you have a shallow well, the old wash wells, you can't put those anymore. Technically, I think under the well regs at the state level, you're not supposed to put shallow wells in for consumption anymore because of the threat of being easily contaminated. And they operate differently than the gravel packs. So, I mean, I guess it would be, be informed, make the decision that's appropriate for your family. But I would also say it's not, if, if it is, if it is something that they want to do, you can't go to any Joe Schmo lab, there's only about seven that the state recognizes. The actual sampling procedure to do it is fairly rigorous. And the report you get back is going to be hard to interpret, it really will be. It, it's hard for people in my industry to read them. So I would say make the decision based on what's best for yourself. But if you have a deep bedrock well, yes, probably, that would be the key word in that.
But if it's shallow, you may be getting something from your own septic system.
Yes. I mean, in, I mean, really and truly, I would look at some of the websites that have a list of common items. The ITRC, I think, when I, we did the presentation, meant, I mentioned that that one has a very good list, in-depth list of things that are used, everyday life that has the stuff in it. To give you an idea, I think I said it before, when I take the samples, there's no personal care use forty-eight hours prior, unless you can find some natural made stuff, which my wife has. The other part of it is, you can't wear anything that is water resistant or stain resistant. So, you know, untreated cotton clothing when you take it. You know, it's a very specific set of gloves. There's a field blank procedure that you need to be aware of and stuff like that. So it's not something that just anybody can do. If someone's interested, reach out to the Water Department, they'll get ahold of me and I can, I can give you the full thing on it, but I would think long and hard about it, because there is, there are, let's put it this way, DEP did not deem us a community that was at risk for private wells, or we would have made it on the private well list.
Right.
And we did, alright?
Yep.
Thanks, guys, great presentation.
To sign.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Hi, it's Joan.
Yes?
May, may I speak?
Is it on topic for this?
Yes, thank you. I just would like to say to Todd and Mike, please, I was at the public information session at town hall and, and here tonight, and I thank you so much and for everything you're doing and how you're keeping us informed.
You're welcome. It, it's, it's, it, 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 it's to our own benefit from what they've seen from other people that have, other utilities, other towns that have gone through it. The more open you're about it, the more, the more you keep people informed, the more accepting, not accepting of the situation, but the more supportive they are and the less fearful they are. So we're just kind of learning, we're, we're acting on the learned actions of what have happened before. So I thank you for that. I think even if we hadn't learned from it, we would, we would have still done it the same way. I, I just think open communication is the best as, as possible. And I, but I thank you for those kind words.
Thank you, and transparency, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
You too.
Good night. Alright, moving on to four point four, the discussion of the landscaping contract.
It did say weed control, I didn't see that. That's why I made a comment.
That's alright, I, I kind of lumped them together there.
So, Madam Chair, I did see them, the proposals, but I have no printing capability, so I'll try to read it on my phone as we go.
Yeah, it was just, I, I didn't realize that there were two separate, you know, the, we, we got the email about the weeds at the law, and I hadn't realized that it was JV turns, that we had the.
We have a contract, yes, for a for weeds and, and all of that, which is separate from the landscaping. So we have a landscaping company that's doing the mowing, and then we have a separate company that's doing weeds. I wasn't aware of it either.
With mowing first, which I guess is the landscape contract?
Yes.
So I guess what, when we talked about this in our Monday, Wednesday, Friday meeting, the question was, had there been, did we go out for bid for three bids prior to boarding the contract?
As far as the landscape is concerned?
Yes.
That I can't speak. I looked in, in previous the OS meetings, and I don't really, don't know when this came up.
The first I saw of it was a couple weeks ago, a week ago, roughly, when I was.
No, I'm saying when we took on the landscaping originally.
I asked in the accounting office, and they said they thought that it ended, there was a three year, and it ended this year.
But now, is it twenty-eight thousand? So does that need to go out to procure, for procurement bid, three bids, or where do we go with that?
Unless it was something that was, that was signed that said we will do this for three years.
Correct.
Yes, it needed to go out for three, not for bids as such, but you have to get.
Three separate, yeah, three separate estimates and then pick the lowest. It has to go through the procurement process, you're absolutely right, Joe, yes. Unless, when they first initiated this, that it was not, there was a.
It was a multiple year contract. So I think we need more research on this one.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if it was just his contracts up, I mean, he's been doing a great job. That's one thing, but if we have to redo a contract, we gotta follow the proper procedures.
I agree.
Yeah, so, so let's move this to our next meeting and get the answer to that.
Yep.
Alright, and then.
That'll give us some time, sorry.
Yeah.
We're gonna say the same thing, I know. We, we need to find out more with the.
The JV turns, yes, yes. Alright, so let's, let's move this to the next meeting, which we'll talk about next meeting.
Twenty-seventh.
Okay, so I'll move this to the twenty-seventh, and that'll give us time to get the answer to that. Alright.
So Rob should have that information, if he, he should have that contract, right? I mean, that's where we're gonna go to find it, or?
Actually, I think I'm gonna go to accounting, because I think they have.
Oh, alright.
And I'll go there first and then find out, I mean, Rob might not have known, you know, he's, this is a renewal. You know, this is who we've been using.
Yeah, I think the decision was made outside of facilities, it was more like, this is what we're going with now, kind of thing, Joe.
Alright, alright, good, perfect, thank you, guys.
Alright, next one is the four point six, the elevator telephone.
The elevator telephone. As we had talked about in one of our day sessions, we had to, we had an elevator inspection, the emergency telephone within the elevator was not working properly. There were some issues that we had to problem solve, which took our IT people, it took telephone people, and it took the elevator people. So it's narrowed down to the telephone within the elevator. The lines are, are, we know what line is going there, we know exactly what needs to be done. The telephone that's within the elevator needs to be replaced. Because it is an elevator, there is a specific telephone that goes into that elevator. Because it is a Stanley elevator, then a Stanley elevator telephone needs to go into the Stanley elevator. I just need a, a vote to allow me to sign the work order to get the, the telephone installed, it's six hundred eighty-five dollars and six hundred eighty-five even, and that's the installation of the new telephone in the elevator.
You need a motion, or you want me to second that?
Need a motion because I have to sign it and send it back to the company.
Want me to make it for you, Chaz? I make a motion that we sign the contract for, move forward to get the Stanley telephone for the elevator installed.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes?
A Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes.
I hope that phone answers Stanley answering. A six hundred dollars, holy god. Alright.
We'll have the, if you get trapped in the elevator, you'll be able to call out, so that is a good thing.
Yeah, my concern is just the, the, we need to get it done because that's, that's a state requirement.
Yeah.
So we had an extension with our inspection so that we can get the telephone in, and then we should, once we get the telephone in, then they'll come back, I'll re-inspect, and we should be good.
Very good.
Alright, moving on to the work session, section five, Town Administration Updates and Reports. I put two things on here. The first was the CARES Act funding update, and I am not ready to talk about that yet. I don't have everything that I need, still working. The Conservation Administrative Assistant Update, the offer letter to the agent went out yesterday, and I am hoping that we have a response by Friday as to whether or not she accepts the offer. I'm hoping it's a positive response. On Thursday, where we, we will be interviewing a candidate for the Conservation Administrator, and I just realized I have to set up a Zoom link for you, Joe, because you're interviewing remotely.
When's that, tomorrow or Thursday?
It will be the same as when we interviewed the agent. Chaz will be the first interviewer.
Nine thirty to nine fifty.
At fifty, you will be the second interviewer from nine fifty to ten ten, yours will be on Zoom, and I will be the third interviewer from ten ten to ten thirty.
Alright, send the link.
So I need to send you the Zoom link, and then we will discuss on either Friday or Monday.
Monday. Yeah. Yeah.
Monday, let me just write this down. Because I wasn't gonna do a Friday meeting unless there was a definite reason, the twenty-sixth. Alright. And that will be at noon. So that's the plan for that. And then we need to discuss onboarding for both of these positions at some point, once we know we have definite candidates who are starting and what the start dates are.
Okay.
Ready to go. The phones, they're all ready to go, I just need in the seat names to the phone so that they can get their passwords.
I'm thinking more in terms of introducing them to the staff.
Yep.
And to the commission, we need a plan for that.
That's your.
So, that's my, my job, huh? Okay, so I will think about that. So that's Agent and, and Administrative Assistant for Conservation, so that is all I have there. Moving on, reports from Board Liaisons.
Got anything, Joe?
No, I'm, I'm good.
I'll, I'll report from Conservation Commission, I guess, more wild and scenic grant. We did a site walk this morning, we have the DEP number for the grant. We did a site walk this morning. We have the DEP number for the grant. Grant, the application to conservation for the work that's done for the grant, because this is right along the river at Adams Dam. And so we did a site walk this morning. Roger went out to get further to, to rebid, because we are again farther along than what we planned to be for this project. We had hoped to have the gate installed in June, and so the cost for the gate, the estimate was beyond the period, and so he got a new estimate and it's increased almost 50% more. And so we're, we're looking at that. The funding was based on the estimates that we had back in May. So anyway, we're working on that. It's all good. And that'll come before the conservation commission. I think it's August 11.
I met, as I said, with the water department yesterday. There's a lot of good things that, that they're doing in the, in the water department. The, we had a great discussion in regards to where they are, where they want to go. The master plan has been very nicely laid out by the superintendent. It's just, it, it's really nice to be able to be a part of, even though I'm just sitting there listening to a lot of what they do, but it's nice that we have this communication. It's nice that they come in and talk. I think this is what we, we want with the boards and committees, to be open so that we can have a discussion and, and talk more about what's going on.
There we go. You stood up Dave and the lights came back on.
And outside of that, we have a, it's not, it's not my board, but we have a housing authority meeting coming up on this Thursday. And it's posted, so if anybody's interested in that, and that's all I got for liaison, I think.
Alright, moving on, next meeting. Friday, July 23rd at noon, we will cancel that.
Yep.
26th at noon, as well as Tuesday, July 27th in the evening. So I have to post Monday by Thursday at noon. We have Tuesday evening, we have a 6:00 PM meeting. And then we will also have a Thursday evening meeting, July 29th. I checked after yesterday's meeting with the three candidates for the interim TA position, and they are all available on the evening of July 29th. One of them, 6:30 and on. So I would like to make the meeting at 6:30, if that's possible, with the first interview starting at 6:40.
Yeah, I'm good. I'll be there. Yeah.
I have it set up right now, is, I could read my writing.
And that's going to be in person, correct, madam?
Person, yes.
Alright, good. Alright.
And I was thinking 20 to 30 minutes per candidate for talking with. And then we'll. So.
Yeah, we, are we going to have like a work session to decide how we're gonna format that, or?
Uh, yes, it would be good to have questions, so maybe that's going to be part of our Monday meeting.
Okay.
For the format of the interviews. I am going to be sending them the times. You know, I'll send out a formal letter saying the meeting will be held, you know, the interviews will be held on Thursday evening, July 21st. At 6:30 to 8:00 PM, roughly. Does that sound good, Joe?
Yeah, I'm good. Yes, I'm fine with that.
That, those are our meetings for next week. Oh, did I skip announcements and communications? I did. Because I'm writing too much. Alright. Announcements and communications, let's go to that, because I had several things come in. The resignation of Marcy Burgon at the police station. The CBA decision regarding the common driveway on Warren Road and the proximity to another common driveway, so there was a CBA decision on that. And the third thing was the forest carbon marketing that Audubon and MAST DEP put out. And so there is a letter regarding that and a booklet regarding that that's on the shelf in the Soffman office. If you're interested in that.
I also, you announce the other grant that we received?
Sure. I believe we can announce it now.
Say that now, I think we really should.
Do you want to do it?
I can find it.
It's the Green Communities Grant?
Yep.
That we, right, like you know, this actually came in today. We need to sign for it, by the way.
This, this is a culmination of the energy committee, which did a really great job in, in, oh, looking at the, the needs of the town. To the select board chair Cal, congratulations to the Department of Energy Resources. Green Communities Division has approved their competitive grant award for $163,576 to a lot of the, there were lights, there were door locks, there were a lot of things to reduce the, the energy consumption for the town, which is a lot of money, but, but it's been outlined for a lot of, for a lot of departments, for a lot of, you know, fire stations, schools, town hall here, and even there was $5,000 for the administrative assistance to, to, to help out with, with all of that. I just want to say, the, I want to thank the energy committee for getting this put together. Because without your work, we would never have gotten this grant, so I appreciate everything. And then anybody else who, who had anything to do with this, I appreciate it. But this is what happens when we come together and, and, you know, we, we, we needed this for a long time, and I'd like to see the same type of effort for when we put together the ADA survey that we desperately need for the town as well. Because that will allow us to be able to, to get more, the ability for grant funding for a lot of other projects that we desperately need here.
Well said.
So, congratulations to the energy committee for all the work on this and the decision. I don't know if, if people were, it was in the spring, that we were applying for this and deciding which of the energy audit projects to put in, so it's cool.
Congratulations to everybody that worked on it.
Madam Chair, I motion that we review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session.
Second. Second.
Favor.
Joe Shank, yes.
And yes?
Veronica Cal, yes. Thank you very much. At this point, is there a motion to move into executive session and not return to open session?
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, S21A4, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or equipment or strategies with respect thereto to guardian IT and security and not return to open session.
Second.
Thank you to this board. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe Shank, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes.
Are we going to do the same thing, Madam Chair, when I'll get out and you and send a new link?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what we'll do. Alright.
See in a few minutes.